I had a couple of things, um, I think I've mentioned this before. I know Heather contacted Nate today about my email, people are getting emails from me and I forget what the email is. It's like exec something or, but they spell my name right, uh, for some odd reason which usually never happens. But, uh, someone pretended to be me, uh, which is kinda weird because most people don't even admit they know me. Um, but if you get some, something from that email, it's not me. It would come from my NFDL.org address or my dog by one address, so, um, that's just some-
And I could just add to that, the confusing part is when you receive the email, it doesn't, you don't necessarily see the email address. It just says Mike Street, who it's from, but if you actually click on it and then dig in deeper, you look at the actual email address, it's not yours, but I can understand. I mean, the first few I got, it was like, okay. But there's really nothing we can do, we've talked with RMM, I mean, it's, people are pretending to be you and other people that are- they must be getting the information from our website because I got one from Robin Williams who's on our, um, Police and Fire Commission over the weekend. So, you know, it's some tricky software or something that's playing those games. But they're usually asking for, if you have time to talk, it's urgent matter, or a couple of them were, could you go buy me some lottery, or, um-
iTunes.
iTunes cards and give me the numbers, you know, they, they're pretty obvious when you read them that, um, for the most part, that it's probably something you should just delete.
If I don't like, I see them in the software too, and, oh, you're home now or something, so be careful. I was home now, so that's kinda dangerous, I don't know if you're home or not, so.
Yeah, it's kinda making it through the list, all the way from the administrator trustees to folks on boards to department heads, so.
Just to clarify, so we don't create any problems for anybody, when Nick said, if you click on it, you can see the email address. If you click on the name, don't click on any links inside the actual email. Click on the name and it'll show you the properties.
Yep, good point, good point.
Um, another thing, I was hoping Jake would have been here tonight. I, I was up in Wisconsin Rapids this weekend and they have, I don't know if anybody knows, they've got the firefighter, it's like the main memorial up there. And so we went and checked it out and we found the break at Norfondi, uh, fire department paid for and had installed it, so that was kinda cool. It's really nice, nice park and it's, it's really well done. They've got a, um, they've got a, they've for nine eleven, um, big statue thing out there in front of the memorial of all the firefighters that have died in the line of duty in Wisconsin dating back, I think the oldest one we found was like eighteen sixty-two or something. So it's, it's pretty neat and they've got a little, um, place with a fire engine in it and, um, some other, uh, historical stuff in there that you can go in there and check out, it's pretty neat. And, uh, last but not least, Norfondi Fest tickets are available, so they can see any board member, uh, Mike Will and I included, and, uh, other regular places, um, create-
BP and, uh-
Here.
Here.
Yeah, at the Logos, it's library, and library also.
Some local establishments have them too.
Okay, um, I think Glenn's has them and does Marty also have them here or, I'm not sure.
No.
Okay, um, but yeah, there's a, there's many places you can find them, so they're ten bucks piece, uh, grand prizes, three grand, second prize is a grand, and then, uh, it just goes down, we package, uh, five hundred dollar cash, three hundred dollar cash, three hundred dollar cash, two hundred dollar cash, hundred fifty dollars spotted package, and the ninth prize is a dinner package, so, uh, please support Norfondi Fest.
Can I add one thing to that?
Yes.
This year, we solicited enough funding for fireworks again this year, so it's a big event and the break time at the band like nine fifteen to nine thirty, so we're gonna have another fireworks show, so.
And one of our board members does the fireworks, so he's, uh, he's, he was really generous last year, so we're kinda excited to see what comes up this year, so that should be pretty cool. All righty, anything else, Mike? All righty. President's Business and Staff Reports, number one, Keith King's trustee recognition. I could have Keith come up to the podium, please. The plaque reads Keith King, two thousand nineteen, in grateful appreciation for your eleven years of service to the village board, or village of Norfondi serving as a trustee, um, so you got unappointed, right?
Yeah, the first term.
Afterwards and-
Yeah, three terms.
So I know it's, we always talk about, um, it's hard getting anybody involved, um, to like serve in this capacity because, uh, you know, you can be trying at different times, so, um, I think, uh, I know a lot of people got tired seeing that thing on the back blocks, it's how does your decision benefit the village as a whole? And I think everyone that serves as a trustee tries to keep that in mind, you're just trying to do what's best for the village. Um, you know, all of our, we didn't always agree on everything all the time and that wouldn't be any fun if you did, you know, because that's what it's all about, is making good decisions for the village and getting everybody's opinions out there. And, um, we appreciate you being on the board and, and, uh, thanks again, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy your return. Heather, is Heather being on the same thing?
Yeah, I'd just say a couple of words, um, I know, I'm sorry it took me so long to get here. First of all, I'd just like to, um, congratulate Chuck Horning, um, on his election and, and also Ann Price, who's not here tonight for her reelection. I think that, uh, the village made, uh, a very good choice and people and, all, all good people ran, um, but, uh, I think they're gonna do a great job. Um, so I feel very comfortable, um, stepping down, we have a great board. And, uh, you know, I, I thank the village residents, um, you know, for the, actually the, uh, three terms that I served besides being, um, appointed. Um, I do thank the village residents for, for, uh, putting their trust in me and, and allowing me to, to serve them. And I'll tell you, it was a, it was a great ride, like Mike said, you know, we always didn't agree, we had disagreements and, and close session and sometimes we, we got, uh, heated and, and, but we always worked it out. And, um, I think the whole board really does work for the village and, uh, does a great job and you just, just look around you. Um, I'd also like to thank, like, the staff, um, all the department heads, um, and the whole staff in general. Um, it's really been an honor to work with you guys, you know, you make, really make these guys' jobs and ladies' jobs very easy, um, especially when it comes to budget times and things like that, you guys do just a fantastic job, you know, keeping the, keeping the levy down and, and, uh, and your wants and needs, um, you know, we, we all try to work together to get everybody what they need, but you guys just do a fantastic job at that, so you really made, make our job or their job very easy and, and it was really a truly an honor to work with each and every one of you. And, uh, I'll be around, I'm not going anywhere, so you'll see me around and again, thank you very much for the plaque, means a lot. I'll put it up and thank you very much.
Is that gonna be my picture of the door? I'm here. I'm curious.
Okay, I guess it's take two though.
I won't touch it, I won't worry.
Ready, three, two, and with that, thank you.
Thanks, thanks guys, appreciate it.
You too.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Oh yeah, I'm gonna stick around a few minutes.
Yep, don't leave without getting cookies.
I have those cookies, so, you know me. Number two, Lakeside Middle School Board, Middle School Board, time.
Yeah, that, okay, time.
All right, um, just, we're getting busy, um, trying to get the procedures done for the end of the school year status hearings, see how many are compliant and not compliant and everything. Um, and, uh, Brooke and I, next Thursday, will be going to the annual TIP Software User Group Meeting, so, and just for that, they've got some new, um, advanced inquiry reports that they're gonna show us. And then we always go through and vote on, um, some enhancements that are proposed, so we usually get a lot of good information out of that. So, that's all I've got for you.
I'm just curious, you know, I've meant to, any board meetings where you talked, how's the transition with Rosendale leaving and I think Rippon is joined?
Yes, uh, Rippon is, we're, that's going really, really smooth. Um, Rosendale has not had their first court date yet, but we have transferred everything that we needed to transfer over to them. And, um, the judge and the, uh, court clerk have actually attended a couple of the court sessions here just to kinda see what's, you know, how it's supposed to run and everything, so.
Did you have to transition all the history from years back or just the open case?
Just the open.
Okay.
Yeah, well, and all of the closed stuff that, I mean, we just, we handed them all over their files and everything because not our files.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, live or another?
Thank you. Still working on getting all of our summer reading program materials ready to go. So this is our flyer that we'll be handing out to the kids, so we hand out, just format. The inside, um, you'll see the information that is in the villager, so if you wanna see the schedule, um, ahead of time, you can view that on the villager or our website. And, uh, we also post some things on Facebook as far as the craft activities, some examples of, uh, some of the things we have going on this summer in case, you know, people wanna see that ahead of time. Uh, but this, this weekend marks the beginning of our summer schedule, which, um, we're close to over every weekend. Um, and then Saturdays during the summer, we are not open, so, uh, that's good to note. And, I think, you know, we just were working on getting some great books for kids to learn about space and planets and astronauts. Um, so we've got a lot of things, um, displayed in the libraries, which is interesting, learn a lot about, about space and the universe. So, um, please stop in, we got a telescope out now, um, it's coming together, so hopefully by next week, Tuesday, we'll have everything. Uh, early sign up begins next Tuesday, so.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, did you make the flyers this year again?
Yes.
You did, okay.
Yep.
Looks like you did a nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. The Minister, Nick?
Thank you, uh, Connie and Heather, I apologize, I think I flip flopped you on the agenda this time, didn't I? That's probably why you weren't ready to switch there. Um, I did attend a luncheon last Tuesday for Salvation Army out at West Springs, Springs Golf Course. Well attended, it was a great opportunity, uh, great to see what the Salvation Army does, you know, a lot of us probably don't know what the Salvation Army does if we've never needed them, which is a good thing, but at the same time, they're, they, they need help, they need volunteers, so it was a well-attended event and eye-opening. Um, I also had Plan Commission on Tuesday evening. We started discussions of comprehensive plan update, uh, the first kickoff, so to speak, with that comprehensive plan update is gonna be a questionnaire that'll go to surveys, uh, if you will, to the residents and we're trying to get that out as, to as many people as we possibly can, whether, you know, we'll do it through the website, we'll do it through Facebook. Um, we'll be handing out hopefully postcards at possibly events, um, utility bills. Um, we, we have a little bit of a time crunch, so we can't necessarily maybe get it in the next villager, but we're gonna try and get that out to as many people as we can, so we spent a lot of time the other night figuring out what those questions might be. And I actually just had a phone call conversation today with the gentleman from East Central to try and modify those questions to what the Plan Commission wanted them to be, uh, through our discussions. And hopefully by, and within a couple of weeks, we'll have that ready to go. The, the goal is that we might have it available by North Fondi Fest, so maybe there could be some handouts or at least some postcards to give out to people to go online and take the, the survey. We will also have that survey available through paper form. Uh, I did meet with Aaron Sadoff and United Way on Thursday of last week about an opportunity to put, and we're talking about this later on the agenda, about a born learning trail, um, and we'll discuss that at a later, later on tonight, give you some more specifics on that, but I think it's a great opportunity for us. Also attended the OSG Executive Committee meeting on Thursday, uh, O-Lang Sur Group. That group, we had a lot of discussion about leaky systems and our sanitary systems and, and, you know, we, we kinda had a roundtable about what we're all seeing and smoke testing and televising, and so it's always good to sit down with other folks that are in the same situations and dealing with the same problems and kinda pick each other's brains. Uh, we have TSC tomorrow, so that's, that's an odd month. Usually our, our Technical Services Committee meets before the OSG, but this month it's opposite. Also, Open Book was held for the, uh, property owners last week, uh, nobody did come to that, which was from one to three on the sixteenth. And Op, I'm sorry, Board of Review is on May thirtieth, um, those of you that are on the Board of Review-
You on it again?
Yeah, I think.
Uh, actually Randy.
Randy, yeah.
You, you already did the training though, right?
Yes.
We just had to get the training done, so Randy's got that now, Mike's done it, so, um, we'll be ready for that on the thirtieth from one to three, also in this room. That's all I have.
Thanks, Nick. Please move over to Derek.
Thank you. Uh, I passed out the, um, April report, the monthly report for April, um, I think at the last meeting I had mentioned that with the warmer weather, um, we were seeing an uptick in activity and, um, this report certainly bears out those numbers. Um, probably note, especially an increase in domestic violence, uh, domestic abuse incidents. Um, and that trend has continued into the month of May. We've been extremely busy responding to domestic disturbances. On May thirteenth, last Monday, uh, we responded to an apparent, uh, drug overdose death in the six hundred block of Wisconsin Avenue. Without giving out a lot of details, uh, it appears that the, uh, incident started in the city of Fond du Lac, went mobile and basically ended up out here. Um, because of the, uh, multi-jurisdictional component to the whole thing, uh, the Fond du Lac County Sheriff's Department has taken over the investigation and is spearheading that. Um, then on May fourteenth, uh, we had the reckless driving, chase, gas, leak, evacuation, uh, mess. Um, we continue to investigate that, we have identified all of the people involved, um, we've spoken with several of them but are still trying to locate some of the others. Uh, we have both of the vehicles that were involved in our custody and our possession and evidence. Um, we're hoping to get that wrapped up and, uh, file some charges this week yet. Squad sixty-five, the new car is up and running, it's out on the road, um, and the old car has been successfully converted to an unmarked, so, um, both of those vehicles are in service right now. Last week, uh, Wednesday, uh, Officers Hendricks and Fink took part in the joint honor guard for the memorial service in Fond du Lac as part of Police Week. Uh, it's a, uh, joint effort, um, that we do every year. Um, I'm thankful to Fond du Lac PD for spearheading that, putting that together, it's a great service, a great tribute. Uh, and I'm thankful to Officers Hendricks and Fink for, um, taking the time to do that, uh, on our behalf. And then likewise, today, Sergeant Bakary and Officer Dean were able to make the trip up to Appleton to part, take part in the memorial services for firefighter Mitchell Lundgard. Um, and again, I'm grateful to them for representing us in that regard. That's all I have.
Thanks, Jake. Just to add to that, um, Jake is not in attendance tonight because a lot of our fire EMS people are also in attendance at that funeral up in Appleton, except the ones that have to be here to cover our ambulance, so that, we do have two apparatuses up there.
Thank you. Um, public works, Derek?
Um, not a lot to report, our last couple of weeks have been very busy getting the pool up and running this year, uh, with general painting, um, repairing the cracks in the floor of the main pool. Uh, we painted the baby pool again this year, uh, we spent quite a bit of time stripping old paint from the floor of the bathhouse. Um, so most of the crew has been working at the pool for the last couple of weeks. Um, we also had somebody in to replace the water tower lights, um, when he was here. We converted the new light to LED, so both bulbs up there are now LED and hopefully they're gonna last longer than the year to year and a half that the incandescents were lasting for us. And then the last thing, uh, last board meeting, I reported that we, um, reconditioned one of the water pumps in the booster station and we're having issue with the motor for that pump. Um, had a technician in from ABB and we found something in the programming of the drive, which he was just able to reprogram the drive and it took care of the whole issue, um, with the, with the pump. He also put that programming into the other two pumps, so we shouldn't experience any issues with those. That's about what I have.
Did you say you hired, you got the summer hires up or?
Uh, oh, the seasonal summer help, the long-term seasonal position, he started two weeks ago and both of the summer help positions will start the twenty-eighth.
Good, good to hear. Thank you. Consent Agenda, approve the minutes of the following board meeting from May sixth, two thousand nineteen, and approve invoices and authorized checks will be drawn on the respective funds as indicated. General Fund thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents. Outdoor Rec, Norfondi Fest, hundred ninety-five dollars. Library Fund, two, uh, two hundred ninety-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. EMS Fund, one thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-four cents. Capital Projects, three thousand five hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Water Department, seventeen thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars and forty-four cents. Wastewater Department, four thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and twelve cents. Stormwater Fund, seven thousand, eighteen dollars and fifty-six cents. Community Development Authority, TIF, one thousand two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents. For grant total, seventy-three thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents. What is the board's pleasure?
Make the motion, approve the consent agenda is read.
You have a second?
I'll say it.
Yeah. Motion by Will, second by Stet, to approve the consent agenda is read, are there any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
None.
We've done administrative, number one, discussion of possible action on the installation of a born learning trail at Village Park. Take that one, thank you, Nick.
Yep, I can take that. Um, so as I mentioned, I did meet with, um, I think, United Way maybe reached out to Aaron, the school district first, and, um, I got invited to the meeting and basically what this is, and I, I did it in the backup here, it's, it, there's an explanation of a, a born learning trail and there's a picture in there of what it may look like. And it basically what it is, it's ten interactive signs for younger aged kids to kind of make them think and interact at, at parks, uh, to, to help their learning, their, their, early on in their childhood. So what this is, is it's kind of a canned thing where you buy these ten signs and it's, it's, they're all over the place. Uh, there's actually one in Fond du Lac, I think there's one in Campbell's Ford, um, they, they've mentioned a bunch of them. So the United Way, it's a three thousand dollar package for the signs. And the United Way is starting by putting the first five hundred in. And we have some really good leads at this point, within a short couple of days of getting it fully funded. Um, I won't mention that, those names until we get that all ironed out. But at this point, I thought it would be proper for us as a, or you as a village board to approve at least the thought and the, the placing this in Village Park. Um, when sitting down with Aaron and, and the United Way, we talked about locations. We talked about Lemieux Park, we talked about Optimist Park, we talked about near the school, we talked about near the pool, we talked about Village Park, and in the end, we thought the best place for this was Village Park for a number of reasons. There's paved trails there already and there's paint, there needs to be painting done, so obviously the other, a lot of their parks have granite trails and, um, there's, you can't really paint on those and have it last. And the school just put a new playground, we didn't think that, you know, they're already going to school to learn, so we thought it would- and then we look at, when I look at Village Park and then staff looks at Village Park, there's, there's great baseball diamonds there and there's a small playground, but there's not a lot else to do. So we thought this would be a nice addition to maybe spark even further something else. Um, the location specifically we're looking at, it'd be, um, where the old tennis courts were, that there's a trail that goes from that area straight north past the existing playground. There was a, a couple that lives in the village that wanted to remain anonymous, that donated four benches, if you've seen those, there were four new benches put in, four or five new benches put in over there. We're starting to plant new shade trees because all the ash trees were there and died. So internally here, we're talking about making that, kinda that area right there, which it already is a playground, but maybe in the future even expanding that playground or putting in a new one or, and adding on to it some, you know, there's some thought process going on there, so we thought that would be the perfect place to do it. There is a paved trail there. If you recall, we actually talked about repaving that, it's, it's going to be put in the capital for two thousand and twenty. Um, we're working on some options to possibly get that done earlier. This is, there is a possibility, if, if approved, we may be able to move very quickly at this and start installing it this fall yet. The, the trail itself, they do prefer to keep it open throughout the winter, which we already, we already do blow off, snow, snow blow that or use a broom. The school, it, that always, the thing that comes to mind with any project like this from our standpoint is maintenance and upkeep and additional costs in the future, so that's one thing we looked at. The painting of the trail, the school has agreed to have their art department do it annually, needs to be freshened up every year. The signs, they say, will last about ten to fifteen years. We would install, basically what I'm asking the board to allow is, first, this to be installed in Village Park. And secondly, for our public work crew to put the signs in, um, my guess is it would take them about an hour and a half to two hours to, it may at the most, three hours to put these signs in. Um, we would put them on either treated posts or steel posts that would last a while. Uh, the only other involvement we may have, which we would have had either way, was paving that with new concrete. Uh, that was something we were planning on putting in the capital for two thousand and twenty, it was actually in there last year, we pulled it out and put it into two thousand and twenty. So with that, uh, my recommendation, as I wrote up, is to approve this installation of that and to allow staff at least to start going down the path of securing some funds, getting, uh, some groups to donate the money towards it and, and kinda lead the effort.
Anybody have any questions? Mike?
I do, I mean, I mean, are we, the asphalt trail is out, that's out there now, are we gonna try to reuse that or just branch off of that one?
Nope, it would, it would be that trail, we would replace that trail.
With concrete?
Yep, yep, that was what, we were gonna do that regard, that was going to be planned anyways. That was something, it wasn't a budget, two thousand and eighteen, February code.
Two thousand and eighteen budget, it wasn't there, our workload didn't allow us to get to it. Um, that's why we have it kinda marked to do it in two thousand and twenty.
Because that's a, a throwaway for people getting in and out of there for baseball teams in Norfondi Fest, I mean, that straight line right now, you know, I mean, I don't, you're gonna beer this thing off?
There, there's been discussions about possibly just a little meander to it, but it would still be, uh, a walking path that's relatively straight.
And what's the three thousand dollars include?
It's the purchase of those signs and the materials, the signs themselves, there's, and, I didn't really mention it, there's ten signs, but there's, there's all English and Spanish, so there's actually twenty signs. For each one.
Be nice to make it a little bit of a curvy thing, but I mean, it's all, had to spend some time and effort to put it in, get it.
I was just gonna ask about if it's gonna be straight or not as well, you know, I think it adds some character, but like you say, sometimes it's meant to be just to get from point A to point B from, we're teams or walking through the park, but, uh, it does add some character, I think you put some meandering in it.
But ultimately, I guess that, from my standpoint, sorry to interrupt, but that was, our goal was to get a little bit of a meander to it. It wouldn't be, you know, where it's hairpin turn, but just to give it a little look, um, we would like to see that.
And then that's, go ahead.
I, I mean, I, I guess I support it, but it would be wise to bounce it off to baseball, uh, clubs and all, to see what they feel about, how it's gonna affect them, do we need to just have them wait a little bit, I mean, I-
It's just gonna benefit them because, you know, all the kids come in.
I, I just would wonder, because like I said, it's, people come to play their sports, they just dash in here and dash out.
Yeah, I, I don't, I guess I don't know how many teams come from that direction, most of them I think park on the south side of the-
True, that's true.
But my thought process is, it, you know, I have a lot of kids, obviously, so, you know, you take your, or your fifth and sixth grade kids to a tournament and you've got all the little brothers and sisters that need something to do while they're there and there's not a lot for them to do at Village Park right now, there really isn't, I, you know, I, that's, that's the age my kids are at, so, um, I think this is just something else to add to it.
So, so the plan is to do the sidewalk in the spring before, like I said, I mean, is that a permit?
Well, ideally, we'd like to get it done this summer if possible, but we're working on some avenues there. And that, obviously, if there was going to be a change in our capital plan or we would ask to move that up, I'd bring that to the board at that point. But at this point, I guess I'm just looking for the approval to move forward with this and that the villages, village board is okay with this going in our Village Park. Because if, if you weren't, then it wouldn't pay for me to keep working on it.
Are you looking for like a motion based on, like, raising that money or are you pretty confident we're getting that money or, or?
We, that would be the intention, I'm not planning on spending any money in this. The only, the only thing I would say that, that you possibly, I, I'm looking for, basically I'm looking for approval to put this in the park and then public works to install it.
And Derek, are you gonna be, that, uh, flood, maybe usually the standing water that gets there is at the line?
That would be the plan.
Okay. Yeah, that would be, you know, you're double blowing us there.
That was part of the plan of replacing that walk with concrete and stuff to take care of the, uh, wet areas then.
Any other questions on this one?
I mean, I support it going forward, just a couple of things, uh, part of this, you would take, would be taking the asphalt off from the, the tennis courts? Part of the, putting the, as, putting the concrete, maybe, maybe not?
Just maybe if we had to wherever this trail was, but.
As a courtesy, I would just ask to bring it, you plan on how you've, you laid out the plan? I, I think we should go on moving forward, just as a courtesy to the board, just-
Oh, yeah.
Show us, show us what you got.
I, I fully intend to keep the board informed as we move forward with the process.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we have most of motion on this item.
We have a motion to, uh, go ahead with the born, uh, learning trail, I presume.
You have a second?
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Stet, second by Horning, to approve the installation of a born learning trail at Village Park. Any other questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Number two, discussion of possible action on personnel policy review and timeline.
I can start that, uh, discussion. Ann had mentioned last meeting that she wasn't gonna be here this meeting, so, you know, I don't, with the board wants us to start talking about personnel policy tonight, we certainly can, but mainly, what I wanted to do tonight, I sent, I did send the most updated version out to everyone. Uh, Mike had asked if I could print him a paper copy and if everybody else would like a paper copy moving forward, I can definitely do that if, if that-
Oh, that'd be nice.
Yeah, I think it'd be nice to, because you can make your notes, so I'll do that. Um, but mainly what I wanted to discuss tonight was at least come up with a time- But mainly what I wanted to discuss tonight was at least come up with a timeline, or how we want to approach it. The last, we had discussed it a while ago, that we talked, there was at least some discussion about possibly having a special separate meeting to discuss it, or we just discuss it for an hour every meeting. So I just wanted the board to weigh in on that and let me know how we want to approach it. But just letting you know from my standpoint, I think I would like to get this taken care of by the end of July if possible, because it's going to be pretty much budget season, and we don't want to have that conflict again where we're making decisions that affect the budget after the budget's passed.
I would prefer that we just block a time during our regular meetings where they call special meetings. That would be my vote. I don't remember, I mean, there's a lot of chapters, but I don't know to what extent there's discussion points left. I mean, if you had to guess how long it's going to take for some of this, are you talking four hours?
You don't.
Well, who was all on, so you went through some of it.
When did we start the process with? I don't remember.
About a year ago.
I think, well, you had to discuss it before I came on.
Okay. So we just, we started working through it, then you got the, okay. So are you thinking just like starting at one, and just going through and see if anybody has any questions, or?
My opinion is that we would start back at page one and run through it. Because we, we, and it's, it's pretty easy to see the changes that the board has made throughout. The only, I, I just think there's basically three or four items that are all hanging out there that need to be discussed. And to answer your question, I think we get through everything but those three or four items in about two hours, in my opinion.
So what are those three or four items that are?
Off the top of my head, I know that sick leave payout was one. I know use of group of village facilities after hours was another. Nothing else is coming to mind right now.
Did we, did we talk, I know there was some discussion about possibly putting in, like, something in the policy regarding, like, like when we talked about, like, so we're going to have the healthcare increases, if that would be a part of like the policy, like this, like a percentage or something like that, just to, just to get the trustees thinking about how they want to see that, you know? Because I mean, every year we're going to discuss that, that budget, you know, how that increase affects everything, and how it's going to go and do, we make that part of the policy, or it's a set thing, or something, I mean, it's just something to offer, or another, I thought there was a little discussion about that, that someone just put in the algorithm, say, how they want to see that.
I don't recall a discussion, not to say it didn't happen, but I think, yeah, it's up to the board, I guess, when we get to that point.
I didn't know if that was one of the plans.
It was, no.
Okay.
I do think we have agreement on most things, it's just there's a couple, sorry, a couple things.
Go ahead, Mike.
I support a special meeting just for this, and the same, but of, it takes four hours, it takes four hours. And our page one, I mean, majority of us went through the whole thing, and let's try to get through it. And I don't want to be, on time, I'm a village board, I don't really want to do it for the board level, let's make a decision. And when we get done with that, we'll bring it back to the board for the final approval. Pick a time that most of everybody, all four, five board members, and the village administrator, and, yeah, committee meeting or something, I don't know how you do it, if you'd say.
It'd probably be a board meeting, a special board meeting.
A special board meeting, and I don't want to be also much in the clock, and, and, and just, I think, for the most part, we went through it, it went pretty well. Let's go through it, a little time.
Do you want to just tell everybody?
We would just always get it, not playing anybody, Friday or Saturday, we get the Friday, you know, the money, discuss it.
Yep, no, you get it.
So each time we get it in front of us, you know, everybody could, a week, a week and a half or two, so let's have a day and, oh, for the patches.
Are you thinking like a, like a Monday, non-board meeting Monday, just say a third or fourth?
Whatever, just, I, I would want a board meeting, I just want to, I probably give it done, and I don't want to look at that clock, you know, wanting to get it after.
What's the rest of the board feeling, would want to do something like that?
Happy willing to do that.
So like a Monday, you think would work, since, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I don't give it all the answers, quarter to two cents, I'm over there, I can't believe we made a decision, well, I don't know, I think that should support, but I can't speak.
Yeah, whatever we want to do, I think in, in my opinion at least, let's move forward with the decision tonight, because we're almost to June, so.
So, I mean, either the tenth or the twenty-fourth, I don't know, about June?
Of June, I, I'm out of the country on the tenth, so.
Okay, so the twenty-fourth or the, or the second one is July, whatever.
Seventeen. The. Absolutely.
Well, why don't we just shoot for this, why don't we shoot for the twenty-fourth?
What is that red?
Yeah, I was going to ask that too.
Jeanette Peace?
Okay.
It's a Canadian calendar, what is that doing up there?
It's a Canadian calendar, I don't make it into an American order, that's ridiculous.
Let's, why don't we do this, let's, let's tentatively set the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Is six o'clock, the earliest you can do.
Six o'clock's fine. Yeah, yeah, because I don't know if Mondays are as busy as.
Could each board member send me an email by Wednesday of this week, letting me know if that works?
Sure.
I agree, sure, that works for me.
And then I'll send it out to the staff. So we'll plan on, so the plan, the idea would be to meet that day at six o'clock, and the plan on being here until nine or ten o'clock, right?
You should midnight bring a pillow on, in case.
I think we, we need to expect at least one follow-up meeting, because, and maybe that could be the board meeting. I, I'm sure that there's going to be one, you know, one or two things that we're going to want to have to do some homework on yet. And that would allow us to do that before we actually bring it to the board level for approval. Does that sound okay?
Okay, we do encourage people, any, any, they have questions, going through it, especially Randy, if there's any questions.
Absolutely, yeah, so I can be prepared with any of that. And I'll. I will try to get paper copies printed and delivered to your houses with, this week, if that works.
So we still have like the eighteenth and the twenty-second of July, if.
Well, yeah, but I, my thought is, is hopefully we can get most, even if, if there's just a couple of things, we can talk about that at a regular board meeting.
So we're just shooting for like approval by the end of July, so we can get out a budget?
That's correct.
So everybody get with that, so, all right, then you get ahold of Andy, and see you all that.
Oh, yeah, yes, thanks. Good?
I was just wanting, you know, as we go through it, you know, I know we're scheduling the twenty-fourth, if, on a, you know, the, our next board meeting is when, the third?
Third.
Third or the seventeenth, if there are certain things that we may want to just throw some ideas around, you know, rather than try to hammer something out on the twenty-fourth. If, I think if you come across anything, you may, I'd suggest putting something on the agenda, just discussion. If nobody has anything, fine, but if nothing else, just to start, you know, some thoughts as to maybe, no decisions, of course, and maybe that would help to grease the skids a little bit for the twenty-fourth.
That's a good thought. Is that, I'll just put it on every agenda from now on, possible discussion and action.
No action, just possible discussion.
We're, we should leave it on, or just in case you do make a decision on something, you don't have to.
Possible action.
Possible action, yep. Because i- in reality, if you, if you come to a consensus, you're taking action, so we want to make sure we're covered legally. You don't have to, you don't have to, you can discuss it without taking action. We good with that?
That's fine. Any other discussion on that item? All right. Communications, any communications? Just a reminder, getting North Fondue Fest is June fifteenth, turned at four, right, like bags all day?
Four o'clock.
Official, four o'clock. But there'll be bags going on there. Yep. Do you remember the name of that?
I forgot the name of it, yeah.
We just locked somebody in. At, at eight.
There's one.
We've got one from like four to seven, that's going to be like our filler.
I see.
Like our, yeah, we had another band, but they had a fair engagement, so we got somebody else. But they'll, yeah, they'll be stepping in and providing some long entertainment. New business, any new business? All right. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Got a motion by Horn, second by Stets, to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks, everybody for coming.
Cookie time.
Cookie time.